Mr. Clapp.
Thank you. Okay, any members of the commission have any more questions for any of your experts or attorney?
No, wait.
All right.
Mr. Chin?
Yes.
Do you want to make a motion that we go to a public hearing?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, this is a public hearing. The public is allowed to speak. On behalf of this petition, I just ask that you raise your hand. I will call on you individually. When you come forward, please speak into the microphone. State your name and address for the record. There is a stenographer. Try to speak slowly and please don't shout out from the audience. The stenographer needs to record all this information, so I would appreciate if you didn't do that. I would also appreciate it if you try not to get caught in repeating what has already been said by another neighbor of yours. If you agree with what Mrs. Jones said about this project, you could just simply get up and say, "I agree with Mrs. Jones." Try to keep to new points that have not been brought up before. So at this time, is there anybody who would like to speak for or against this petition? Just please raise your hand. Chief?
Russ Lackley, captain with the Western Ecology Fire Department. I was actually thought you guys were going to ask us some questions, so I was prepared for that, but during the package that was given to the firehouse, they did speak with Mr. Clapp. The chief is no longer chief. We have an interim chief at this time, so he was unable to make it tonight. We had a couple of issues based on their packet that they gave us. It says that Maxamp requires the fire department training at the end of construction. We're all in agreeance with that. Any cost for training aides or anything that they may need to do that would be borne by them, not by the fire department. We would want accessibility prior to, during, and after construction. You needn't have any type of emergency up there because, you know, when something starts, people start looking around, different things happen, and, you know, we roll in and now we've got to cut a gate or lock.
Did you say they typically have a Knox box on?
Um, we have a fire department, I think it's a Knox box. Actually, it's, you don't call it a Knox box, it's a locking box. It's a key box. Knox is a branding.
Okay.
Which we can put on what's called a Knox. I mean, see, I think I'm doing it. It's a lock box lock. So we use our key and you put it on their padlocks, those two padlocks for the time being as opposed to putting a Knox, a lock box on the site. But when it's done, that would be advantageous to have a lock box on the site and make sure that the keys are checked periodically. We would be doing that just to make sure these don't work. It says, "Site designed to allow for easy access for emergency response." My concerns, or a couple of concerns, are the distances between the middle of the array and the furthest points to the outside. By my calculations, it's 240 to the left. As you look at the picture, the longest point would be 320. One gentleman said that there'd be accessibility around it with like a small vehicle or brush truck or something along those lines. The research that we have done, any event of emergency with this is a basically stand back and deny access until proper authorities can come in and break what they need to break in regards to power because copious amounts of water is all we're going to be using and we're not really going to be putting water on live electricity. So that's not, you know, we're probably not going to be driving up into the middle of it, although accessibility in the event of an emergency, because, you know, things can happen during construction, something could happen, so the gravel road, the gravel access road is great. I think that's it. I think we've covered it all.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Step down. I know that this solar technology is still fairly new. It's becoming more popular. Have you seen any of these on fire before? Have you?
There's very little data. Everybody's got a smartphone or have accessibility to a computer and they go online and that's what they said about the fire service, that nothing's ever happened and somebody hasn't done all right. And really, these things are, they've got a good clean bill right now, but long-term, we don't know. So, you know, that is a concern of ours. There's really no moving parts short of some type of natural situation, a lightning strike or maybe something within the panel that would fail, create overheat and create some type of spontaneous combustion or just heat up enough to catch fire. Certain rows, obviously the distance between the rows, I mean, we probably end up losing a portion, but probably not the whole farm. I can't envision that. But water supply in that area, we have the brook at the bottom of the, the bottom of the road near the bridge, that's pretty much accessible most of the time. We do have tankers and again, we're not going to be spraying a lot of water till somebody comes and says, "Okay, this is all that and you can do what you need to do."
Okay. Blue.
Me?
You.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I can't remember your name. I should know it.
That's okay.
Rustigian something?
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
Donna Rustigian, 401 Hopkins Hollow Road in Green. Nice to see you all.
Your last name, please?
Oh, R-U-S-T-I-G-I-A-N.
Thank you.
Nice to see you all again. So I did come prepared with some notes this time. So I'm going to just ask you for some clarification on a couple of things, if that's okay. So in comparison to the Green, Camp Green project, what's the difference in this versus size? I mean, we know that the size is not comparable, but you denied application to Camp Green, the deep water wind. So what could be the difference? Why is this being considered?
Because it could be boiling, you know what I mean?
Okay.
They filed that application.
Okay, so I...
If you want to ask the difference between the two.
Yeah.
I believe this is one megawatt. So last one, I believe, was 2.5. I believe the amount, that total parcel was 40 acres. The amount to be cleared was 20 acres. Okay?
All right.
So we're looking at, and I believe roughly 50% of the land they were going to clear. I believe on this one, they testified that it was going to be somewhere 6 to 8% of the lot size they were going to clear.
Okay, but both properties privately owned, but, and I was all for you guys, you know, denying Camp Green with the deep water wind because I was in a letter. I just wanted to understand, so you consider any solar project coming in front of you? Is that correct?
If somebody submits an application at this point in time, these people got in before the moratorium was put in place.
Okay. And is this considered according to your special regulations? Is this considered a minor installation according to your section 2110 in the definitions?
I believe it's a major.
This is a major? Okay. So then, I just want to remind the committee of the zoning district. RR5 is a rural residential district. These are rural areas that which are not served by public facilities and which intensive development should not occur. These are areas characterized by very low density development, large estates, agricultural uses, certain low intensity non-residential activities incidental to rural environment. This does not include any industrial installations and if I'm reading it correctly, this would be an industrial installation. And I just want to go on, I'm not opposed to alternative energy. What I am opposed to is disrupting the rural character, disrupting the zoning ordinance of RR5. Now, I know that that is up for review with the town council and I'm sure that there's going to be opposition for that, too. Some other notes that I have made, and I just want to revisit this when we were talking about deep water wind, is the chemical makeup of the cell, the solar cells themselves. There's arsenic, cadmium, telluride, hexafluoroethene, lead, polar vinyl fluoride, and these are all a danger to the environment, to groundwater. If the panels crack, chemicals can lead off into water runoff. If there is a fire, fire can release the cadmium, which can break, which can become airborne, and I don't know if anybody knew that. I didn't until I researched it, or wash away. Now, the chief said that they don't, they won't use water on an electrical fire, which tells me that they'll use chemicals.
No, we won't use anything.
You won't use anything, just let it burn out?
Pretty much.
So then, we could get a forest fire. So we could have a forest fire.
I don't think so.
Well, I mean, there are all types of possibilities. I just also want to point out that vandalism is thriving in Green. Any day that you can, you go on Nextdoor, Green, there are all types of little vandalisms, people breaking into things. So there is a lot of residential area, children in the area, kids love climbing fences, they're curious. So I just want to point out that there could be broken panels just because kids want to throw things. They can, you know, they're just mischievous little things. Also, I thought of this, as you're considering different types of alternative energy and possibly providing, you know, positive advice to the town council to approve these alternative energies, including the wind turbines. I know that you didn't approve those, but is there any one in the town tracking the acreage loss to alternative energy? Just curious. Because on the Google Maps, I have a neighbor who did the Google Maps, and there are so many scars in the West End right now. So I'm just going forward as you're thinking about approving any type of solar project, you might want to take into consideration how much acreage we're losing. Because isn't the town of Coventry known for its beauty, the West End? People take Sunday drives. I mean, it actually brings in income because people come in, they stop at the Summit General Store, or they'll stop at some, maybe down at the, across from the mobile station, that Pond Pub, or we're generating tourism dollars. I guess I'm getting the point I'm getting to. I think that's all my points.
Can I ask you one question?
Yes.
Is your house anywhere within that mud square there?
I'm on Hopkins Hollow, so I'm not very good with maps, so I'm sorry.
Okay.
I probably, I'm, I'm next door, I'm a quarter mile from Camp, from Green Library.
Is it on?
And so is Green...
It's not? Okay.
I don't think so.
Okay.
But actually, I mean, you know, you want to conceptualize, you want to talk about a butters. We're such a large area, our houses are all spread out.
I wasn't talking about butters, I just asked you a question, that's all.
Okay. But I just wanted you to consider all those points, especially the chemical leakage. I know that they're very, supposed to be very safe, but you don't know. Again, there's not a lot of data out there. We're in uncharted territories as far as our knowledge base, both residents and, I mean, I know what some of you do, but I don't think any of us are experts in the solar or alternative energy field. Thank you.
Thank you. Sir, tell me. Sir. I didn't want to offend you.
My name's Ernie Leim, L-E-I-M.
Thank you.
6342 Flat River Road, Green, 02827. My question's for them.
Sure. Address it towards me and then they'll...
Okay, all right. I need to know where their energy is stored when the electric company refuses to take it. It's not on in that. And it's got to be stored because it's DC.
Okay, I will... Mr. Spear, do you have somebody that can answer that question?
Yeah, so I can answer the question. So what happens is...
Just please speak into the microphone so he can hear you. Sorry.
So what happens is, you're correct, this is DC. It's generating electricity that...
Speak louder so they can hear you.
Thanks a lot.
Lift it up.
There we go.
There we go.
Okay. So what happens is the energy is generated with these solar panels. You're correct that it's DC, direct current. What happens is there's an inverter that's at the site, so it's not stored, there's no storage, there's no storage of energy at the site. There's not a battery or any kind of collection of energy. What it does is it converts from DC to AC and then it connects into the national grid system that we spoke about. So there isn't a storage of energy at the site. It's all converted from DC to AC into national grid.
Okay, and what if they don't want it?
There's a 15 or 20-year contract or a long-term, 20-year. So there's a 20-year contract with National Grid that was one of the things we spoke about earlier. So they've indicated that they have committed for a 20-year period to accept the energy generated from this site, so it's a contract.
All of it?
That's correct.
Because they won't take all of it from a propeller, as you know.
To be honest, they don't.
Well...
So I'm familiar with the solar project and this particular project.
Turn this way, she can't hear you.
Sorry.
Are you familiar with the solar project?
Yeah, so for solar projects, the National Grid is accepting by contract for 20 years the entirety of the energy generated from this project.
Lock this up, can I ask him one quick question?
Sure.
Can you just go over the makeup of the panels? I know there was some talk about chemicals and whatnot, but can you just clarify and explain that?
Sure. I testify a lot of meetings, that comes up because if you Google things, that'll, something will come up. What we did for this project is that, when there was a comment, there's not a lot of data, there is data that's out there. What we're proposing is Canadian solar panels. The spec sheets are included in what we provided. Canadian solar did what's called leachability tests, so they take the panels, they break them, and what they do is they run water through them. And the purpose of it is to address the questions that came up. Is this going to generate a toxic leachate that might impact water supplies? And what they found is it doesn't. It meets poor quality standards. So the idea of leaching from these panels is something that we demonstrated and provide data to show that it's not a concern for these panels. Historically, back 20 years ago, 15 years ago, 10 years ago, there were other kinds of panels. What's done now, because of the reasons of coming to meetings like this, you know, it's not an issue. And again, the information was submitted as part of the record.
I just have another question.
Just to get back to the inverter, so if it's a DC system, under what conditions does the inverter kick in and change to AC?
When it's generating energy. So at nighttime, are we using string or have we decided string or central? What is it?
Central.
Central. So what happens is, when it's generating electricity, then it's doing the conversion from DC to AC. So at nighttime, for instance, it's not generating electricity, therefore it's not operating.
Okay.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Anybody else in the audience would like to speak?
Hi. Arthur Rustigian, 401 Hopkins Hollow Road in Green.
Your last name, please?
R-U-S-T-I-G-I-A-N. I'm a tree hugger and live in the woods. Unfortunately, old enough to be at the first earth date, 1970. I'm not entirely opposed to this particular homeowner's plan, it's the broader projects in general. But it puts the town on a slippery slope of allowing one, which makes it harder to deny future projects and kind of ends up at cross purposes of saving the environment by cutting it down. The night you were at the work session of the town council, sort of a rhetorical question of could somebody just clear cut 50 acres? Yeah, I guess they could if they wanted to look at a sea of stumps. That's their right. But this is for a commercial purpose and in that sense, if they could violate the comprehensive plan of the RR5 definition as mentioned. I think there's also a suggestion here that these just sit there. They're just passive and they just sit there and they don't bother anybody. But they are in fact industry as defined as processing raw materials, something like to electricity, and they are machines. They are transmitting energy. And so I think at the end of the day, even though they seem somewhat passive and unobtrusive, these are industrial machines for a commercial purpose. I don't believe they belong in Green at all. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening. David Hankins, 556 Lewis Home Road. You know, I've been to the workshops and, you know, they've, the town council has asked this committee to look into ideas for solar ordinance. The thing is, is this is not really a Coventry problem if you want to look at it as a problem. This is a Western Coventry problem. There's no major installations being put before this committee anywhere else in town. So I'd like to ask you, does anybody live west of 102 here?
No.
See, Mike...
Excuse me a minute.
Yeah.
Can I ask the staff a question?
Yeah.
Has there been anybody into CU regarding solar facilities east of 102?
Yes.
Thank you.
And that is major installations?
Yes. But these are proposed, so they...
I understand. I'm just asking.
They weren't pulled because of the law, sorry.
I understand.
So maybe I'm way off on that. But my concern is, is maybe you just don't get us. People who live in rural areas live there for a reason. You know, when I was 16 years old, I read a book called Living the Good Life by Helen and Scott Naring. And they talked about, you know, homesteading and being as self-sufficient as you possibly can. And in 1930, they bought a property in Vermont and they developed it. And in 1950, because of all of the tourism that was coming in and the ski slopes and stuff like that, Helen, I mean, Scott Naring was 70 years old at the time. It lost the rural feeling for him. They moved up to the rocky coast of Maine. At 70 years old, he started all over again. 30 years more sweat labor. The man lived to 100 years old. But this is what you're putting on us out there because many of us feel that we don't want to live in an environment where we have wind turbines. That's already seriously degraded the whole rural atmosphere of Western Coventry. Now, I know that you, that was brought before you guys, but it was the town. The town allowed that to happen. And Western Coventry residents aren't forgetting that. So the more of these solar proposals that you're allowed to go through, the more degradation the rural atmosphere. You know, we were talking, the gentleman, the contractor, he talked about financial, you know, what the financial value of their house was. What about just well-being? I mean, money is one thing, but what about somebody's well-being? Does that have any value? That's a hell of a lot of value to me. That's why I moved out to Green, was for the well-being. Not to see how many dollars I could get from my house. The only time I'm going to be wanting to count the dollars is when I'm headed up to Maine because it's just too much here. Now, why should I be forced out? The town's not going to lose out. Somebody would buy my house. You just don't get your tax dollars. The only person losing out is me. And that really pisses the hell out of me because I've worked for 30 years on that property and nobody seems to get that on this side of the bench. Thank you.
Anybody else? She's coming up. Ms. Ferguson, I'll get to you next.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening.
Hey, challenge. Okay, my name's Deb Skaling.
Spelling your last name?
S-K-A-L-I-N-G.
Trace that microphone, please.
And I'm at 310 Lewis Home Road.
Thank you.
I had a whole speech ready to go. Donna stole it all from me, so... You know, so I can't really say too much other than the fact that I can't direct.
I know you are, yes.
I am concerned, I, I still don't believe that these panels are not full of some type of toxin, arsenic, cadmium, gallium arsenite panels, you know. I'm not convinced that it's a nothing in those things. And because of that, I've got, I've got, we've all got groundwater. If those, if those panels leak and we do have a lot of vandalism out there, it is not, it is, it's not a question of if, it's a question of when these panels are vandalized. You know they're going to be taking rocks, they're going to be taking pot shots, they're going to be doing something. And then they'll be at the Connecticut border within two minutes on their derbies. So it's just, I don't want to be the town cottages giving faith to see if something happens or even a statistic. I'm just not comfortable with this at all. It doesn't belong here. It's a solar power plant. This is a rural residential area. It does not belong here. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Margaret Ferguson, 811 Sisson Road. I don't want to repeat the previous comments, but I do have some questions about the company that is doing this work and leasing the land. I believe it's Coventry Solar. I'm curious about their track record and the ownership of the company. Is it, is it American ownership?
Yes, it is.
It is? Okay. And it has a track record?
I need her to face...
Yeah, you have to face this way. She can't hear you.
No, I'm sorry.
And then I will bring Mr. Clapp up to answer your questions. What else do you want to know?
I'm just curious about the track record of the company, what they've done in terms of previous installations and...
Okay.
Just due diligence.
All right. If it's okay turning Spear, is it okay if Mr. Clapp comes?
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you. So Maxamp Inc. is approximately 10 years old, veteran founded in Massachusetts, payroll North Andover area, basically centrally based in Boston as we speak, with offices in Providence, New York, a little bit up and down the East Coast. We have currently over 100 megawatts of power that we own and maintain and that we have developed, again, primarily in Massachusetts, to some degree in New York, and a fair amount of projects in Rhode Island as well, but not any near as extensive as we do in Massachusetts.
So you do have a history in Rhode Island with other projects?
We do. We have a project built in Foster, 1.3 megawatts, a second almost through permitting process of similar size. Again, one is operating as we speak. We have half a megawatt in Richmond, Rhode Island on the ground. We have a 2.3 megawatt on a rooftop in the industrial park in Datastow, Montse Point, and then some smaller rooftop projects as well. So we've been active in Rhode Island for three years, four years. We are privately owned and we, I guess, one of my biggest differentiators might be as compared to other solar companies, is that we are full service and we develop projects... as compared to other solar companies is that we are full service and we develop projects as we're doing here now, but we also have in-house construction management. We have in-house operations and maintenance folks. We take care of these, do the entire process that we own them. And we have in-house asset managers who monitor the computer screens of how these projects are doing and make sure that they're active and that there isn't any issues with the panels. So we are full-service growing, 65-person term, privately owned, Massachusetts-based.
And are you a principal with Nexamp?
I'm a director of development.
Director of development, okay. Very good. Thank you. Anybody else? Shields, you had your hand up. Still want to talk? You want to let other people talk?
Thank you. I'll go after.
Okay. Sir? You. Good evening.
Kenneth Cole, 161 Lion Castle Road, Greenland.
Street, Lane.
L I O, L I O, N E L, P I E R, that's all it is. First of all, I agree with everything that's been brought forth today. The other concerns that I have is I didn't see any engineering on how these things are going to be laid out as far as what they're going to do to the ground underneath and on top.
I asked, I'm sorry, I, I thought I asked them what they were going to do inside the fence and they were going to use a fescue seed, seed mix or something? I thought they...
Were there any per tests done on to see what the level of the water table is? And what kind of bases are they going to be built on?
I don't know if you did any soil evaluations. Alan, please come forward, sir. Did you do any soil evaluations?
No, at this point we haven't, so this is a multi-step, sorry. This is a multi-step process. So we're in the second step in the process, which is the master plan. The next step in the process is preliminary plan. So what we do is go through the stormwater evaluation, collect all the soil data that we need. So that's something that's going to be coming up. Regarding your question about how they're, they're mounted, that it's a racking system, we do have a detail that's part of what we provided as part of the plans, but essentially what it is, there's posts, posts are driven into the ground, the racks are mounted on them, they're driven into the ground a sufficient distance so essentially holds them in place so they're not ballasted, but essentially there's posts that go into the ground.
Do you have depth?
The depth is approximately eight feet that's driven in.
And the units themselves are...
It's a difficulty here.
Yeah, we can't hear you. You gotta look this way and speak into the microphone.
I'm sorry. The units themselves that are 10 feet high?
A little less than 10 feet, so approximately, you know, let's say eight and a half to nine feet in depth and depth and length. What ultimately happens during the, prior to the building permit process is, um, you know, when you're building them, uh, they're driving them in that depth and, yeah, so I don't think it answers your question, but yeah.
Well, my concern is, you know...
Sir, you gotta speak this way into the microphone.
My concern now is that these are basically kites in the air. You get a good windstorm, if you've got something that's just driven into the ground, eight feet, and you've got 10 feet sticking above, that's a panel that's about the size of a tractor trailer truck, let's say.
Oh, I don't believe they're that, how, how are they, four by six, four by eight?
Yeah, when they're all scheduled like that.
No, they're individual panels.
Yeah, but when the wind comes, you're catching the whole kite.
Okay, all right.
Yep. So, so what happens is when they're putting them in, it is part of this process, something called pull tests. So what they do is go in and they'll drive these in and they pull them to make sure that there's sufficient bearing capacity for it to be able to stay in the ground. And if there isn't, they'll drive them a little deeper, that's the reason that it's approximately eight feet. So there's an iterative process that goes in to make sure there's sufficient depth and sufficient strength to be able to handle that.
My concern on that is the water table is very high and the ground makeup out here in Green is muck. And if you, you can drive something 30 feet in the ground and still pull it up with a pickup truck because it's nothing more than wet muck. Something to consider.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Spear, I'd like to ask Mr. Clapp if he's had any history of kite flying panel, anything like that. I'm just asking, you know...
I can elaborate a little bit more, um, you know, fairness to Alan. He hasn't had the specific design as it's evolved a little bit. Uh, in this, in this particular case, we'll be using screws that actually screw into ground five or six feet and they are three to four inches in diameter. The design of that screw is based on a real geotechnical pull test as he referenced. And the, the width of the screw, the length of the screw was all designed just so we, we don't have the problem that was addressed. So those screws stay in the ground, whatever type of soils exist, these will be designed specifically for that use and they do not blow away. We haven't had any projects where foundation and racking has failed from wind, uh, tree falling, yes, but not broken.
Very good. Thank you. Sir, in the blue?
Jason Trainor, 6399 Flat River Road.
Spelling your last name, please.
T R A H A N. Hello. Uh, the only thing that I really have to say is that I do agree with everything that's, uh, all the points you made, the council...
Just nice to meet you, please.
Sorry, I'm, I'm sorry. I agree with all the points that have been brought forward to the, to the council this evening. Um, and the only thing I'd like to say is that, um, that there is a lack of data, um, about the long-term effects of a solar farm. And also there is a lack of data on what's going to happen to the housing values. And I just want to leave you with that. With a lack of data, please don't gamble with our futures. That's all I'd like to say. Thank you.
John?
Good evening. John Shields, 376 Cars Trail, Coventry. And I could just point out, almond butter to the wind energy project. Okay, uh, you know, I've just watched what's happened there. He's gone in in the last three or four months, clear cut like 40 acres, this town, they're not even a blade of grass there. So I just figured...
Have we done that?
Nope.
Them, I mean, not we.
I'm just pointing out so you know that I'm not here only because of Lewis Farm, but it will affect me too at some point. Hopefully four things I've got to say. First is, my point of this and the turbines is, once it's gone, it's gone. We'll never get it back. And, you know, 40 years from now, people aren't going to be saying, thank God they put up the turbines, thank God they put up the solar fields. I'm hoping people will say they saved the western end of Coventry. It's a corridor, it runs, you know, it's the last green corridor, it's the first green corridor you get to coming out of DC and New York. Very important that we save it. That's point number one. Point number two, when I go to the planning commission's website, it says that you follow the comprehensive plan. I read the comprehensive plan and it says utilities are to be cited in industrial or commercial zones. Doesn't say anything about putting them in RR5. I know they went ahead and they did the zoning ordinance, they kind of bypassed that. As we all know, you can't, can't operate that way. State law requires that zoning follows the comprehensive plan, not the other way around. So I don't even know why we're here entertaining these motions. Uh, it's against the comprehensive plan until that's changed. I just think everything should just be, be stopped. That's two points. Uh, point three, uh, I'm going to pick on the appraiser, but, you know, I noticed he pointed out the Peck Hill property in Johnston. My parents live up in that end of town. I drive Peck Hill often. Uh, I believe it's on the site of a former industrial building. Uh, that's number one, so it's not a similar or comparable property to even consider. Uh, second, uh, it's right near the landfill. I believe the landfill eventually is going to go right out towards Peck Hill Road. It encroaches every year. So it just wasn't a similar property to try to compare it to Green, it, not even close. Uh, you know, I think what's needed is, you know, we should have gone to West Greenwich, definitely houses that are abutting, in my opinion. Uh, before being a police officer, I actually was a broker and an appraiser. I did that for four years. And, uh, I don't think it's up to the appraiser to say, no one else has come out and proven that it doesn't affect. The appraiser is supposed to go out and to find similar properties directly across the street and do a market analysis to see, was there any type of change? I know it's difficult, but that's what you're supposed to do. I think we could all pay someone to come here and just give their opinion that they're for it. Uh, but I think I would have appreciated seeing some hard data. And then the fourth point will be, uh, on the turbines, I heard the same type of things, that we weren't going to hear them, we weren't really going to see them, they weren't going to affect property values, they wouldn't be noisy, and just every step of the way, you know, it just hasn't proven true. And I'm just very concerned with the solar panels also, that there will be problems. And again, my last point will be my first point. Once it's gone, it's gone. I really think we have to save it. Okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Miss?
Hi, my name is Joanna Harrington, 418 Hopkins Hollow Road. Joanna, J O N N A. I agree with everything that everybody said prior to me. You see, my questions are all crossed out because it was like, okay, that takes the... Uh, but there's a question that was not asked that I'd like to ask. Power, and this is from the National, the power goes to National Grid, they collect it. And then we are, does it go? Because all the power from these turbines goes to West Warwick. They, we, Green has to look at them, Coventry has to look at them, hear them and see them. And you've eviscerated huge acres of land, but, well, they have, not you, but, but gets nothing from it. So what I'm trying to figure out is, okay, if, so the power goes to National Grid, but then National Grid gets, decides they can send it off to somewhere else, right? You kind of collect it all up and, but none of it actually comes back to Green, right? Yes, no? I'm asking National Grid. I don't understand how that works, how, how...
I think it just goes into the grid and it...
Goes into the grid.
And then wherever it's needed.
So it doesn't benefit the western end of Condriff Gialle, even though the solar panels are out there in Western Coventry? How do the homeowners here benefit from any of that electrical power that comes out of that field? I see a company making a lot of money.
I don't know. I, I don't know.
That's why I thought I'd ask you, Mr. ...
Wait a minute. Um, do you have any other questions?
No, that, well, like, everything's been pretty much covered, so that, that is my question. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have someone that could come forward and answer that?
Sure. So where does the electricity go and how does it benefit Coventry?
The electricity physically is distributed throughout the grid. We produce electricity, we change it from DC to AC and disperse it into the grid. The benefit to National Grid is that they in turn have to create a little bit less power at their power stations. And essentially the way electricity moves throughout the wires and into our home, it seeks out the path of least resistance essentially. Um, and it just keeps moving throughout the wires. So there is electricity created that is dispersed in this local area, but it just, it just spread amongst the grid. It isn't destined to any one particular location. And again, the benefit to National Grid is that there's another source that's generating electricity. It's less that they have to do, it lowers their improvement costs of maybe for their substations, they lower their demand.
When you said substations, power stations, Manchester Street, is that a substation?
That's a, that's a substation.
That is.
But at some point it's generated, fueled by typically oil or gas or, not oil, but typically. So that's lessened when there's more, what we call distributed generation, is renewable energy in remote locations. And the benefit to the community is essentially, um, the personal property tax that you folks get from projects like these based on the state law.
Mr. Corley?
Yeah, I just, I, I think the, the theory behind it, correct me if I'm wrong, is that it reduces their reliance on fossil fuels.
That's correct. It does.
That's the issue. So if they're not burning it at Manchester Street, they can take it from the solar panels.
Yes, it essentially lowers the carbon footprint of their system. That's the idea.
I'm sorry, what did you just say? It lowers the...
It lowers the carbon footprint for National Grid for this area. The more renewable energy that exists, does that...
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, sir, you already spoke once. I'm, I'm gonna let that woman, Emily, put my glasses on.
Pam Zabel, 6285 Flat River Road.
Can you spell your last name, please?
Z A B E L.
Thank you.
Um, I just want to, um, mention about how they were talking about the carbon footprint and the fossil fuels. The problem with that theory, um, and I'm all for, believe me, I'm all for alternative energy, but the problem with that is when you cut down trees, you're eliminating that benefit, okay? So when you're cutting down the trees, trees hold carbon. And when you cut them down, they release it, okay? So it's not helping. So if you're, if you're thinking as a, as a group that, you know, this is, is a good thing for environmentally, it's not. Because it's, it's not balancing out because you're cutting down those trees which are, you know, taking in the, um, CO2, okay? So, and then it's no longer releasing oxygen. The whole thing is messed up because we're getting rid of the trees. All right? So then, um, the other thing is, um, like, like the gentleman before said, we are in a, an area that is, um, rare, very rare, and it's only our area. And it's from like Canada to, um, I'm not really sure how far down, but we are in a strip where it's trees, okay? And that means we actually see stars. I don't know how it is out, you know, further out into Coventry, but we see stars. And I'm afraid of the slippery slope, all right? So once we allow in one business in the western part of Coventry, um, I'm just afraid of how that's going to, and this is a business. And again, like other people have said, I'm not necessarily opposed, you know, to this tiny little, you know, people are calling it tiny little space, but I am opposed of cutting down trees in order to make solar power happen because I, I think it's, you know, the fallacy of what the business is trying to, you know, generate as far as it's a good thing for the environment because I, I don't believe that the numbers would be there for reducing carbon footprint. Thank you.
Oh, wait a minute. Let, I want to head here from this woman and then you can go, okay? Because you've already spoken once.
I just have a technical question.
Okay, that's fine. I'm just trying to give everybody a chance.
Julie Hankins, I live at 416 Lewis Farm Road. Hankins, H A N K I N. My question is this, when I go to work and I drive down Lewis Farm Road and I'm coming around that bend and I look up to the right, am I going to see those panels? Am I going to see them?
Problem.
Yep.
I...
You've got 100 acres over there and you're so close to the one road. And as I live out in Green, um, you can't get up over the ridge. It's, there's a ridge going up there and you can't get up high enough so I don't have to look at it. Why? Why do we have to look at it? You're going to put it on a 100 acre parcel of land in the middle of the woods. Why can't you get it up high enough? can take that electricity out in Greene. So Lewis Farm Road, when they tie into those poles, they have to change them. So then they're going to bring them out, and they're going to bring it onto 117. How live are those wires? Are they going to change the wires? Are they more powerful? Because that pole at the end of 117, at the end of Lewis Farm Road, at that wicked bad curve as you go around, gets nailed at least once a year, if not twice. And it goes, and that's where they're going to tie in, because that's the last pole on Lewis Farm Road. So what's going to happen when that pole goes down? And it's a mess when that pole goes down, because when I go to work, if I'm coming home, I can't even go down Lewis Farm Road. I gotta go all the way around, all through town to go down that road. And that happens a lot, because I work at Foxwoods, and I come home at midnight, and I see it a lot, that that pole goes down. There's two poles there. So is that going to be a hazard tying into that? What happens with that pole? Where you tie in, if somebody hits it?
Our National Grid will replace it, as they do today.
So that pole isn't going to be any more stronger than it is already?
They'll improve the size of the pole, and they're responsible, just like they.
Yeah, Alan, she can't hear you. It's not there.
I'm sorry.
For the photographer.
Today, National Grid maintains the poles that you have. They'll be improved as designed by National Grid. I'm assuming that they'll have a large pole. And if in fact the large pole is damaged, then they will come up and fix it again, just as they do today. It's their fault, their responsibility to do that.
And so there's not more electricity going through it, or you're putting that in?
There is electricity in the wires coming from our project, through those wires, yes.
So it's more electricity going through that, that one pole? It's going to be more of a live type of power? More, there's more electricity in that spot?
We're generating electricity that goes through those wires, that's correct.
It's going to be stronger there? Those wires are going to be, have a lot more electricity going through?
National Grid will design the wires in the street that will handle whatever electricity is generated. It will be as safe as it is today in future. It's all of the electric company and their codes that have been around for years.
But that is a bad pole. And I just want to know why I have to look at it? Why can't you get up over the ridge? That's my, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. The gentleman in the back, she may.
I'll wait. She needs to go.
She needs to go?
Thank you.
You, he said you need to go.
I just have two quick questions. Every other project.
Yeah, I'm sorry. For the record.
Dottie Jackfoney, 552 Cars Trail.
Pottage Trail?
Cars.
Cars Trail?
Two Rs. Um, every other project tonight, someone echoed, I don't know who, I'm not making an accusation, I don't know who, but someone echoed, it follows a comprehensive plan. I've heard that for everything that was proposed tonight, but I haven't heard it for this. So I've asked, I believe I said Matt? Okay, Matt, an email? You know, I'm looking for something in the comprehensive plan where all this follows. I didn't really get an answer, and I didn't want to bother him, I knew he was really busy. But I'm asking for, you know, how come this one wasn't following the comprehensive plan when all the other proposals tonight, someone said or echoed, I don't know who, it goes with the comprehensive plan?
It was probably said when an approval was made, when they read the findings of fact.
Okay.
They, they stated that this project conforms with the comprehensive plan. There's been no statement made tonight of findings of fact, that's why you never heard it.
Because it hasn't been, because it coupled comment first, is that right?
No, because it's not, that statement that you're referring to, you heard every single other project, was made at the very end of the project.
Okay.
At the approval process time.
Okay.
That's when you heard it.
Okay.
When the, the individual who was making a motion stated that this project conforms to the comprehensive plan, that's when you heard them make that statement. You know, you, you said you reached out to Matt, you know, asking him. I think you, you well know, you know that the comprehensive plan does not have anything in it about alternative energy. You know, back when that comp plan was last updated, there really was no alternative energy section of the plan. I believe you also know, you've been to all our meetings and the council meetings, that we are in the process of updating our comprehensive plan right now, and it will include a section on alternative energy. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yes. So.
So you're already approving it, you're already working towards that goal, that's your goal?
I'm sorry, what, what is my goal?
No, you just said.
What I'm, what I'm telling you is that in the process of updating the comprehensive plan, it's my understanding that we will be hiring professionals to do that. This board will not be doing it. They'll be working with the staff, and they'll be hiring professionals to update the plan. And as part of the update, it will have a section entitled "Alternative Energies," and they will spell out a whole section on solar, wind, whatever.
That's what I meant, they're already working on that.
No, I don't believe that anybody has been engaged yet.
Oh, okay.
I'm, it's, I don't believe anybody has. I believe the feelers are out there, they're.
Still working on the RFP.
Still working on the RFP.
Okay.
Okay. They're close.
I've just, I got confused.
Okay, that's, that's fine. I just wanted to.
Okay. And, and the final thing I want to just leave with you guys, I don't remember if you guys remember a few years back, but, you know, the Providence Journal showcased Greene and its summit. It's a rural village within a village. Please, please, please do not destroy it.
Well, sir, I promised him, you can go next. I'm gonna let the gentleman in the back go.
If something gets inside there and gets on those panels, they're going to fry. Just a thought.
Okay. Sir? Yes? You.
Right.